Thanks you all. Welcome to the City Council meeting. Will you stand please for the pledge and the invocation, Mr. Tom Gooch?
Let us pray. Almighty God, Creator of all things and of all people, Source of wisdom and courage, give us the Spirit of compassion, righteousness, and justice. Guide us as we gather to do the people's business. Grant us in all decisions to be wise and to be faithful. Encourage us with a vision to be as servant leaders for the well-being of all. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Mr. Coolidge? Let us pledge a flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Alma, will you call the roll, please?
Carrie Hodge, Ward 1.
Here.
Jay Stepp, Ward 2.
Here.
Louis Hansmeyer, Ward 3.
Proud to be here.
Calvin Cooley, Ward 4.
Here.
And Tafran, Ward 6.
Present.
And I am also here tonight in the mayor's place. And so, welcome again. First tonight on our agenda is the approval of the City Council minutes from the last meeting. We've had them in advance and had an opportunity to look them over. Any corrections, additions, or a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Thank you all in favor.
Aye.
Thank you. Sometimes we have a nice resolution, something that we can do, and that is happening tonight as we honor Mr. Tom Gooch with a proclamation. His family is here. And I will read that on behalf of Cartersville Parks and Recreation. Is that what you want me to do, Ms. Jones?
Yes ma'am, it is.
Okay, thank you. Whereas Tom Gooch shared his passion for teaching as he served for 33 years as a math and computer science professor at Kennesaw State University. And whereas Tom's dedication to the development and leadership of local youth was evident as he coached and mentored athletes in the local recreational football leagues. And whereas for almost 20 years, Tom served as a Cartersville Little League coach, most notably with the Crackers and the Tigers. And whereas Tom served as a valued member of the Board of Directors for the Cartersville Little League program for many years. And whereas for almost two decades, Tom served as a district administrator, acting as a liaison between the Little League headquarters and the local District One, and brought a large number of tournaments to the city of Cartersville. And whereas Tom was recognized in 2017 as the first inductee into the Cartersville Little League Hall of Fame. Now therefore, I, Diane E. Tate, Mayor Pro Tem of the city of Cartersville, by means of this proclamation, express gratitude to Mrs. Suzie Gooch and her family for allowing Tom to serve, and we acknowledge the great and positive impact the youth of our community received through his leadership. On behalf of the city of Cartersville and the Cartersville City Council, the Hicks Park Little League building will be named the Tom Gooch Little League Building in honor of Mr. Tom Gooch. Mr. Anderson?
Yes, Sir Mayor, Pro Tem and Council, that was perfectly read. And this was taken to the Recreation Advisory Board who unanimously approved this, and I'm bringing it before City Council for this. This is per the city of Cartersville's naming rights that was approved by Cartersville City Council. Tom was a great asset to Little League, great asset to our community, and a great asset to our Cartersville Parks Recreation Department. I know Mr. Cooley and Tom coached numerous games against each other. And anyway, it's just a special time for this naming, and I do recommend City Council approve the naming of the Little League facility after Tom Gooch.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Mr. Anderson, or do we have a motion?
I would like to make that motion.
Yes, sure.
Especially to Suzie, I remember you quite a bit, and your family. Tom and I go way, way back. Tom taught me in computer science, so he's a very good friend of mine. And I would like to make the motion that we change the Hicks building concession stand to Thomas Gooch concession.
Thank you. So we have a motion, do we have a second?
You do.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Who do we have tonight here?
We have Little League President Ben Gingrich, we have Ms. Tom's husband, Susan Justice, we have JP, and we have Jake Gooch. Jake recently signed a scholarship to play for Georgia Tech.
Good.
And so, anyway, we're very proud of them. If you want to present the proclamation.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Justice, would you like to say anything?
I just thank the city of Cartersville for giving him the opportunity to do what he did. He loves kids, he loves those sports programs, he's in that direct department, he was a Little League president. Now, he's one of many who helped Tom lost ways, and everybody in the community, it's special to him to us. JP went through the Little League program, now JP is going to take over the Cartersville Little League program. And I have a son, I have a son, who's now a junior quarterback, someone, who also entered the Little League President Junior program, the senior president, so that doctor more protective, and so, it's been a long, um, it's a grand history, and we see that out of the park, all the families.
You can come up and give the picture.
President, give the picture.
You've got like Greg, aren't you? You don't want to picture either.
Well, that was sure a nice way to start the evening. Next on our agenda tonight is the time change for our December 7th meeting.
Yeah, there are two meetings a year that the council moves the meeting from its regularly scheduled 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. This is one of them, the December 7th meeting because of conflicts with the Christmas parade that comes through town. So we'll move that to 9:00 a.m. with your approval, which is recommended.
Good. Heard our city manager and his recommendation, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next on our list is the resolution to create festival zones. Ms. Reed?
Good evening, everyone. I'm requesting the creation of two festival zones. The first coming up in November is at the request of the merchants under the bridge for the downtown open house on the 16th where we will close the street and have the festival zone available for them. And then the second is the possibility of having a festival zone with our Christmas karaoke event on December 16th. And that is pending, but any permits that we need and approval for that secondarily will go, of course, before planning and zoning.
Any report also on the Bluegrass Festival?
Well, I would say that it has been our best one. This is year number five, and I think we've really gotten our stride. Great weather, highest number of vendors, I think our best turnout, and a great kid zone. I would say that this has been a very good year for our events, and I thought Bluegrass went very well.
It was a huge crowd.
It was. Thank you.
So you have a recommendation for two of the festival zones. Any questions, Ms. Reed? If not, any motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Next on the agenda is the first reading of an ordinance, it's the Occupational Tax Certificate ordinance. Ms. Amber?
Yes, this is a correction to the Occupational Tax Ordinance. The city has always charged the penalty that is allowed by the state, and that is 10%. And so, we just recommend approval of this, so this is the first reading. We just want our ordinance to reflect the 10% that we have always charged.
Any questions? Is this the first reading tonight?
Just as an aside, I had a conversation with Mary this morning, I was asking about this. She said if the ordinance actually says 20, you call Keith, and he says, "Well, you can't do that." So, this will move to 10. Right, Keith?
Yes.
Thank you. So this will be taken up at our next meeting, and if you have any questions, there will be places to go to get the answers. Next on our list tonight is the pension amendment. Mr. Porter?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem, this is the first reading again of an ordinance amendment. Essentially, every once in a while, the mortality rate tables, which affects the liability in the pension plan, get changed. And this is going to move us to update the tables from the 1983 to the current unisex data provided by the Federal Department of Labor. This is something, again, it happens every once in a while, and per Mr. Lovell's review, we need to do a pension ordinance amendment to make these effective. And again, this is just a recommendation to City Council.
Any questions, Mr. Porter? Eighty-three is a long time, not to have had a...
It is, but every once in a while, they look at them, they adjust them, so.
Oh, okay. Okay, if no questions, do we have a motion?
First reading.
Oh, excuse me, thank you. Appreciate your help. We'll take it up for the next meeting. Thank you, Diane.
The next item, Mayor Pro Tem, is the Georgia Power easement. Georgia Power has approached the city regarding an easement near the northwest corner of the Oak Hill Cemetery. They need that, basically, there's some trees that are getting close to their 46K B-line there. It's close to north of Harris Street by the Public Safety Headquarters. They approached the city. Tommy Sanders has looked at this, as well as the electric department, and they recommend approval of this easement. Georgia Power is going to pay the city $5,500 if the City Council approves the easement.
And this was discussed, of course, in the work session, and...
Obviously, that property is not as expensive as some other properties that we look at, yes?
That is correct.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Porter. Any questions, Mr. Porter? Any recommendations, motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, and Diane, I think you're up for another one?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem, this is the last item I have, is Employee Wellness Program. We discussed in the work session, CHP, Corporate Health Partners, who we used many years ago in our wellness program, had changed our ownership since we used them last, but there were several options on the table that were provided. Sounds like from the work session that City Council was interested in option number three, which is the health risk assessment for the employees, a biometric screening, a one-time personal results coach, and then some what they term as culture building, or wellness, healthy breaks and wellness challenges. Their estimated cost of this, if the City Council wants to go this route, is $66,696. We started sometime in January 2018.
And you've got the corporate terms.
Yes, I do.
So we had a good discussion during the work session. Are there any other questions? This would be mandatory for our employees.
That's so directed by the City Council.
You can do it, too.
And I can do it, too. Any questions? Do we have a motion with an option? Please list the option.
My motion is, do we approve option three?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Good. Any opposed? Thank you, Diane.
Thank you.
Thank you. Software license agreement. Mr. Manino?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. We're respectfully requesting to purchase a software license agreement to add additional users to the current CityView software we're in the process of implementing. The purchase will be 6,500 and an additional 1,430 for maintenance. Again, we respectfully request your approval of this item.
Any questions, Mr. Manino? If not, a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Bucket truck purchase. Don, how are you?
Afternoon, Honorable Mayor Pro Tem and Council. Come to unite, Electric Department is wanting to replace one of our older bucket trucks, this 2001 model, and it's seen some good days, but it's time to head down the road. We've got three bids on this vehicle, and the low bid was Altech Incorporated for $148,546. When we were writing the specs, we went to the garage and got input from the garage to help us design the best possible truck for our needs. And with input from the garage, we wrote a spec, and we're recommending that the Council approve the purchase of the low bid from Altech Incorporated for the amount of $148,546. This is a budgeted item.
And I think you mentioned during the work session, it would also be used some by Fibrocom if we need it.
Yes, we'll be glad to... Anything that we have that belongs to the city, we're glad to loan it out, and other departments do the same.
So this one's, the old one's blown up. It's not like those trucks that Greg steals from you on occasion, he can't use it.
It's still running, and we're glad to... We would be glad to pass it along to other departments if it... In fact, we've had an inquiry on it from the, possibly from the county and some other enterprises, so.
Any other questions? If not, a motion?
Motion to approve, bucket truck purchase.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Residential garbage truck purchase. Mr. Sanders?
Yes, ma'am. We have a 2001 truck that had an engine failure. This truck was used on the back door route. We opened 12 bids, and we recommend the bid from Wade Ford for $76,575. It's a budgeted item, lease pool, we had $100,000 budgeted.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Sanders?
So this is the little one, Jimmy used to run?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Any questions? Just remember that your motion should include lease pool. And we're ready for a motion? You're ready?
I'm ready that we would purchase the vehicle described from Wade Ford through lease purchase, backdoor pickup.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
If I could say something, since I won't be long, I think that's just one more example of good service that you all provide for this community. And, uh, thank you all for doing that.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Or an example I used when someone has a turned ankle, and our garbage men go to the back door, and they help them get the garbage can out, and those kind of things happen in every department. It's a good time to say thank you. Yes, I agree with you. Tommy, I think you have one more.
Yes, ma'am. We also need to purchase a front loader garbage truck. This is a 40 cubic yard truck that dumps dumpsters for our commercial garbage service, and it's also replacing a 2001 model truck. We opened 13 bids. We had, the budgeted amount is $245,000, and we are recommending the best bid of a Mack truck from Carolina Environmental for $242,630, and that's also lease pool purchase.
Any questions? If not, any questions, a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Main Street Sewer Lift Station, Number 2 Pump, Mr. Jones?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, everyone. As we mentioned in the work session, the Number 2 pump in our Main Street lift station failed about two weeks ago. It had multiple failure of pump seal, the impeller, and a motor control board. We priced that out. A new replacement pump would be $15,000, or we can rebuild the pump that we have to like new performance. It is a sole source item because that station is designed to work with a specific type of pump. The repair quote provided by Flight was $5,349.14, and we would recommend that for your approval.
Thank you. Any questions?
Just a comment, these are folks that we've used before, we know them well, I remember the names.
Yes, we know them well, too. We actually have standardized to their pumps in all our lift stations to get redundancy and commonality. It doesn't mean that you can pull one pump out of one station and put it in another, but it simplifies the maintenance process. Because each station pumps to a different head and lift, they're not cross-compatible all the way across the system, but we do find that there are a lot of parts and control systems that can be cross-compatible, which is why we try to stick with this brand.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob. I think you have another one. Waterford Sewer Lift?
Yes, ma'am. This is essentially the same type of situation, just in a different location. The Waterford subdivision is serviced by two separate sewer lift stations, and the Number 2 station, we have been, over the past several years, trying to purchase what we consider critical spares. In this particular pump station, there are two pumps. They operate in a lead lag, so you have one primary pump, and then if flows are high, the second pump kicks on and takes the burden off. If we lose a pump, you can understand that that causes a bit of an issue in those high-flow periods, that we may not be able to service the designed pump capacity of that station. That puts us in a position of having to send personnel out there and actually pump it with a truck and shuttle back to the wastewater plant until we can get a pump. That can get extremely expensive, as you can imagine. So what we'd like to do is ask your approval to purchase a backup pump, a third pump, to keep on the shelf as part of our critical spares program that's compatible with this station. The new pump is, again, it's a sole source because of the branding and the brand-specific equipment at that location. This would, again, be a Flight pump. The pump price would be $6,989.30. That is a budgeted item, and would recommend that for your approval.
Can I ask one question, just to make sure I understood what you said?
Sure.
So this backup pump can't be used at the Main Street, it would be only specific to that station?
That's right. Yeah, the impeller, the actual rotating part, is designed for the head that it serves, how much lift it has to do. So each station has a different lift, and that's why you can't just mix and match them across the board.
But it is same brand.
It is the same brand, so the control parts, there's a lot of common parts that we could rob. Essentially, parts outside of the wet well we could reuse.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And one more, Mr. Jones?
Yes, ma'am. The water treatment plant, as we discussed earlier, our water treatment plant, based on just about every water planning manual that you can find related to Bartow County, the city of Cartersville Water Plant is going to be a primary supplier of water to the county for the foreseeable future. The planning horizon that the Metro District uses is through 2050. This plan was just updated in the last year. And in that plan, our plant is providing 85% or more of the water that the county will demand over that planning horizon. For a plant that's going to play that critical role in the growth of the county, we feel it is prudent to get started on planning how that plant will evolve over time. And what we have before you tonight is the first step, and it's a facility assessment. Essentially, what it is, is it's an assessment of existing assets to determine what their remaining lifetime is, what their operational capacity, rather than their design capacity, would be. And to, once we build that baseline of information of what do we have, then we can start making some educated planning decisions on what will need to be replaced and what will need to be added to build the plant in reasonable increments of increase up to those needed demand volumes in the future. So what we have is, we've asked our engineer at the water treatment plant to scope the project, and they've given us a price for that, and that price is $74,042. And as we discussed earlier, I think that Wedeman and Singleton, who is the engineering firm that gave us that price, they are uniquely qualified to do this. Their firm actually designed the original plant. They have been involved in not every, almost every major plant expansion since it was constructed in the early 70s, and they are currently involved in a multitude of projects there at the plant now. They have all of the record drawings, they have a lot of information on that plant that just puts them in a great position. They don't have to relearn that stuff. So we did sole source it to them for those reasons, and feel like that is very justifiable in this case for this type of work.
Any questions?
It's kind of budgeted.
It is budgeted, yes.
Bob, the projections of how Bartow County will grow have bound have changed in the last five or six years. Are those projections available to this company as they look at facilities?
Yes, they will use those projections. You can go and you can find a host of projections. The projections, there's a range. And depending on whose numbers you want to use, you know, you can see a significant swing in those demand forecasts. What we'll do is, we will, for the purposes of this planning, we will take the upper end of that range, and sort of as a worst-case scenario, but in reality, I personally don't think we will see anything like that. I mean, if you, sort of to give you some idea of what we're looking at, I think the demand forecast for 2025 is 50 million gallons a day. We're currently averaging about 12. So I don't see us making that kind of move in that amount of time, but that's how their numbers pencil out. Essentially, what we do learn from this exercise is, how big will that plant be, you know, at whatever time? What is the maximum that that campus can produce? And I think that's good information regardless of whether we need it in 2025 or, you know, 2075.
That's what I started saying, this document or assessment will be a go-to for you for...
Right, and you know, it's like a lot of these big plans, there'll be a good bit of heavy lifting in the front part, trying to figure all this out, but you know, if we do get to it, and we're like, we're gonna see 50 million gallons for a while, it's something that we can update in reasonable increments and not have to incur this kind of cost. It wouldn't be terribly hard to update, or, you know, a fairly minimal fee each year to provide this to, you know, even decades out, so that we know where we are when we need it.
Got you. Thank you. Any other questions?
I'd make a difference with the North Georgia Water Authority to know that we anticipate this kind of use, and they won't give the water to somebody else, like Galatuna.
Well, you know, that is part of it as well.
I don't really know that that's what you say, but that's core.
Right. What you will get out of this plan ultimately is, you can say, the plant can, I'm just gonna throw a number out, the plant can make 40 million gallons a day. Well, the next part of that question is, is, okay, where's that 40 million coming from? Because right now, as we sit, the core will give us just a touch less than 17. So if we want to make a 40 million gallon a day plant, we have to build it to work with river water, not lake water. And that comes into the planning, because that is a vastly different exercise, depending on what your source water is.
That's a political question, yeah.
It is.
This is a technical one.
Right.
That would be some data for the political question.
It would.
Good, very interesting. Any other questions or a motion? Any other questions or a motion at this time?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
If it will be your pleasure, we would like to add one more to the agenda tonight. Mr. Anderson wants to talk to us about Aubrey Pool. Do I have a motion to add that to the agenda?
Sound move.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. I always hate to admit that you made a mistake, but I made a mistake on the September 21st Council meeting. I made a recommendation in the amount of $4,603, and that amount should have been 4,07222, and I would like to make a recommendation accountable to City Council to correct that number before the contracts are signed.
Now, Greg, was that your only mistake in this whole big building project?
Uh...
It's to my knowledge, right.
It's always one of those questions my mom and dad used to ask me. I don't know. Never answered them either, did it?
Any questions of Mr. Anderson? I was trying to give you a compliment, Greg, but I mean, they turned on me.
I appreciate it, I do.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Greg. Is there anyone else who would like to come before City Council tonight, and does anyone have anything they'd like to bring before us? Very good. If there is nothing, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Sound move.
Thank you. There's no debate.